21, special school board meeting. It is 7:27 and I'll call this meeting to order. I do have to take roll call again. So I will just go down the list with Mr.
Here.
Did you say Buck?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Here.
Mr. Derrick's?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Tiff?
Here.
And Chair is here. So all seven school board members are present along with Superintendent Anderson. And we will just go right into our meeting agenda, which is school starting and ending times. We called the special meeting to order because we need to have transparency in our conversations and we weren't able to have any discussions about school starting and ending times without having a special meeting, which is why this meeting has been called so we can have this conversation out in the open. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Anderson to give us background on where we're at.
I'll try to quickly go through the background information, which is posted on the website already, but I think it's important for context. We've been reviewing possible transportation plans since the spring. For the upcoming school year, we are planning a no bus zone limits for students in grades K through six to be lowered from two miles, which is what it was this past year, down to one mile. That's consistent with referendum promises. Older students will still have a two-mile walk zone though for this year. There will be few, if any, transfer buses and we're excited about that. In fact, right now, we're not planning to have any, but you never know, there might be just one need somewhere in the system. Of course, this means shorter bus rides for students, fewer discipline issues and fewer concerns about students in busy parking lots going from one bus to another, as all of us probably recall from twin bluffing past years. In the spring, as a result of a need to make some budget reductions, we did agree to budget reduction that relies on a two-tier bus transportation system. That means that generally, there's a bus that will go to one school, drop off kids, and then run another route and bring in a second set of kids at a different building. This system reduces the number of drivers and buses needed, but does require staggered school starting and ending times, you know, obviously. We've discussed these transportation issues in some budget meetings this past spring, as well as an agenda committee, operations committee, and then a school board meeting on June 7th. During the meeting on June 7th, we did a, or there was a motion passed to, a couple of motions actually that were passed. First of all, to finalize an addendum to our current transportation contract to reflect First Student's proposal to implement that two-tier system, and then also to authorize the superintendent and administrators to determine starting times based on the discussion that we had that night. The second part of that was with a high school starting as First is discussed. In July, I briefly mentioned verbally during the meeting what those times would look like. And if I could go back a little bit, on June 7th, there was a rough draft of potential starting and ending times that was presented in writing during the meeting. So I've talked about this on several occasions. Since the July 19th meeting, we've come through several different iterations of the schedule based on feedback from our transportation contractor and robber, as well as building and district administrators. And I won't go over all the changes as they came about, but I do want to mention one thing during the June 17th meeting, we had talked about the possibility of trying to start the high school kids at 8 o'clock instead of at an earlier time. And so one of the immediate, or one of the drafts did include that potential time at 8 o'clock. In the end, it wasn't suggested for the reasons that I described there, largely because we need either an hour and 10 minutes or an hour and 20 minutes between the buses at the end of the day. So that was a big part of it. You can see that after some times were sent to parents via email, there's been considerable feedback from lots of people. By far, most of the feedback from parents has not been supportive of starting elementary students later in the morning. By far, I have received some feedback though from parents who like the schedule as it's proposed, but by far, most of the feedback has been opposed to it. And so I want to be open and honest about that. As Jennifer said, you know, the communications out of parents could have been better. And that's my responsibility. But I think regardless of the message, I think there'd be parents with concerns about the schedule as what we have planned. So as a result of that, Pam asked me to call a special meeting. And so that was set up for tonight. And my thinking is that hopefully we can discuss this further and then choose the actual starting and ending times, just to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of moving forward. I have three versions here. Version A is just what was released to parents, and so I don't think that is going to be recommended by anyone. Version B is a slightly different schedule than what had been sent to parents. It has an earlier start time for the elementary schools at 8:55, and then the student day would end at 3:40. The high school kids would be at 7:45 to 2:30. A couple of things changed compared to version A. First of all, the high school did reduce the length of the proposed day from seven hours to six hours and 45 minutes. They really wanted seven hours to make the schedule work as effectively as what they'd like, but they did reduce each period by one minute, hallway passing time by a minute, and then also reduced advisory time by the same amount. So they did get it to 6:45. It's not, you know, they'd rather have seven, but they can make it work at 6:45. The other thing that changed is I was really hoping that we could get buses to the elementary schools and park before the kids were released. That was one of the things that I really held close as long as possible. In the end, that is a huge factor in terms of determining ending time for the elementary kids, and it just did not work out. So I do have elementary kids in version B being released at 3:40 with buses at 3:45 arriving there. Mr. Bagels already indicated that, you know, he'll work with the other elementary principals on some of the plans that he does with his teachers in terms of releasing kids and getting kids at the buses. So we'll make that work, but it's not as ideal as what I hoped with the version A. And so that version would include high school kids starting first and then elementary kids coming back on the second route. Version C has it the other way. And so version C would include, well, as you can see there, elementary students learning from 7:50 to 2:35 each day, which is, you know, more close compared to what we were doing this past year. And then high school students would start at 8:50 and go until 3:50. You can see the parent bus drop-off times, the first bell, and also the parent in bus pickup times there as well. So really, I think it comes down to two of the options. One with high school kids going first and the other with elementary kids going first. You can see the recommendation still remains version B with high school kids going first, but I wanted to outline some of the reasons, just to get it out there. First of all, the actual request for high school kids to come in first came from the high school itself. And they really emphasize the importance of learning time for our student athletes in the classroom. They're concerned that if high school kids are going second, if they're starting later in the day, that we'll have a lot of student athletes missing class. And just as important, we'll have a lot of coaches missing class. We have just over 35 coaches at the high school. And so if their sport, of course, is, needs to leave early, then they'll be leaving early and therefore, you know, we'll have to have substitutes cover those classes. So that's the primary reason for recommending version B. There are also some kids and their parents who've expressed concerns because of work for kids after school each day, as well as the impact on some other entity, youth groups, you know, throughout the community. The, really, that's the most important thing. The version B does include a longer student day for elementary schools compared to this year, which had been shortened. The reason for that is that principals express, principals and teachers express the need for a few extra minutes in order to cover the curriculum that they need to do on a daily basis. And versions B and C actually provide for that. Just a reminder that we had very similar schedules in previous years before we implemented a one-tier system. I believe it was in early to mid 2010s when we did that. For example, a common scheduled Burnside was 9 o'clock or then a 5 start, and then kids being excused at 3:30. It varied from year to year, but that's, there were like three or four years where I saw that particular schedule, so I wanted to include that. And really, that's all I have. That's the recommendation. There are definitely positives and negatives to both schedule possibilities. Board members have really received a lot of strong and logical feedback about why they want a particular schedule. And so I think we're well versed as far as what we need to know to make a decision.
Arlen.
Thank you. I got a lot to say, but first I want to ask a couple of questions. One is, has the new bus contract been signed with the longer route times for two-tier system?
Yes, it has.
Second question, is there any way to get out of it reasonably? And third question will be, what is the cost if we went to single tier with existing or the newly signed contract?
Yeah, so I got the answer to your first one and said we did sign it. If we wanted to change our decision from June, then we would approach First Student and see if they would be willing to change. Likely, it would be going back to the previous contract that we had, you know, this year. And, you know, that would take some time to decide. In terms of, you know, if it's one-tier or two-tier, in our particular circumstances, a one-tier is more expensive, but it really depends a lot on exactly how many buses we have and how much services are provided. So I know Jackie had included about a projected $60,000 savings for the, you know, the budget planning documents. In the end, we're confident now that we could reduce two to three buses instead of just one, so it'd be more than $60,000. The biggest concern though, as far as delaying or reconsidering this work, has to do with other things besides money. And let me just see my notes here. We have some other related issues. So for example, if we did a one-tier system or went back to where we were, we'd have more buses, but that also means more bus drivers. And that would be a significant concern for First Student. It's not just the general buses, but it's also special education buses. As you mentioned, we'd have to renegotiate our contract with First Student. There would be higher costs because we'd bring back two to three buses. We would have elementary kids intermingling with high school kids as they come in the same buses. And so there is a greater risk of transmission of COVID under those circumstances. The, there'd be a drop, or drops probably, at Burnside in the morning. And so that would greatly, or that would increase the rides for the kids coming from Welch and Prairie Island, because they would first go to Burnside, drop people off, and then go to the high school. So it lengthens those times and there'd be other, you know, changes like that throughout the system. Another concern is that the bus company is a union shop, and their expectations are that we give them the bus list in the second week of August. And I think that would be incredibly challenging, and so I don't know what the repercussions of that. And really, changing between one-tier and two-tier and back is kind of a transformational thing. It's not something you just do in an afternoon or even a week. I mean, it takes a lot of careful planning to implement it. So I know that our router and our bus company do not suggest going back to that at this time of the year for this coming year. A year from now, it's a different story, but I think for now, this year is, would be overly challenging.
Can I ask just quickly, not only bus drivers, but we need monitors for each bus as well?
Well, we need monitors in all or most of the special education buses. Or the buses that serve our kids with special needs.
Mr. Bryant, you're up next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things, I guess, you know, I think we all were just a little bit surprised by the email too. And I don't recall, and maybe anybody else here on the board can recall, was I don't remember hearing a 4:10 starting time, finishing time for elementary school. Did anybody else hear that? And that's what you stated, you reported as your administrative team report, but I don't remember hearing that. So that really kind of got, I think, the ball rolling. As elected people, you know, we get emails all the time, but this one really fired things up and our job is do the best stewards of the school district and everybody and listen to our constituents. And that's why we're elected. Hoping that we do the job that we're supposed to do. So what, I guess, what time, what was the original time before we switched it around from high school went first to elementary went first? Couple of years ago, I think it was, with that. What was that time that I have a follow-up? Do you remember?
18, 19? Is that what you're wondering?
I don't, I what, you know, whenever the, we switched the times from the high school to the elementary went first and then we, what was it before that? I guess, everybody went, I know. So maybe that's not an answer we can't come up with.
Yeah, I don't have that particular data. I do know that the biggest concern about that particular busing system, at least from my perspective, would be the reliance on all the transfer buses. And so we'd have kids who would be driven to one school on, you know, on a regular route, and then they'd have to wait at that school and then get transferred to a second school. And so those bus rides were, you know, significantly longer. You know, I think that was the big issue with that. And then also just the reliance on all those transfer buses. That was, that was a really tough challenge.
But we kind of did away with that when we went to the neighborhood schools, so to speak, and we closed Jefferson. So now the kids walk or get on a bus and go to that one school instead of transferring and all that. So, so yeah, I got more, but I think I want to hear others talk. But I, yeah, I guess I remember, one last thing, I remember a board member, Nikki Buck there, asked a question or expected us to have a discussion or find out what the times were going to be. And I think by getting it by the email, I think that really stirred people up. And especially since we just, like I said in the email back to you, that, you know, we just met two days before that. So at this time, I will let others ask.
Yeah, I will just, you know, further clarify that, you know, during the meeting two days before, I did mention verbally that the elementary kids would be out, you know, shortly after 4 o'clock.
I don't, I don't remember that. Anybody else?
I, I do remember that, this is Denver, but my understanding in, through that discussion was that that was how it currently looked, but there was going to be a significant number, amount of work to try to make that not happen. That was how, that was not the final number.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yeah. Ross says we've been going back and forth and, you know, getting input from, you know, people who can understand those circumstances. Now, in the end though, the recommendation, if we want the high school kids to go first, would be for them to start at 8:55 and then finish their day at 3:40. So in the end, we tried to get back to before 9 o'clock. And I've already talked about why we were able to do that. We had to give up some things in order to accomplish that, but that's the proposal that the admin team was making today.
Anna, you're next in the queue.
Thanks. So I'm wondering, because I wasn't on the board at the time, what, I mean, COVID was chaos, but what was the feedback that the board got when you switched to having elementary start earlier and high school start later last year? I know most of that was kind of COVID-driven, and I'm sure, like I said, parents were overwhelmed with all sorts of things, so maybe that wasn't the biggest thing to deal with, was the bus or the school starting times. But what kind of feedback did you guys get from parents about that?
And maybe I can answer first, if you're okay with that. Very little feedback. And, you know, which is good, but as you said, there were so many things going on and I think everyone understood that things had to be dramatically different because of the year of the pandemic. And so very little feedback. You know, I'd hear comments from time to time about, you know, concerns with the elementary kids walking to the bus stops early in the morning when it's dark, you know, during certain times of the year. That was one concern. You know, another concern is it was a, is a change, you know, it's a significant change that occurred. And much of the feedback has come after the year presented itself. So we didn't have fall sports, so there really wasn't a lot of feedback about student athletes missing class. But then as we started the winter and then especially in the spring, when you have outdoor activities, we heard more of that feedback.
Jennifer.
As Arlen said, I have a lot of thoughts, but one thing that I keep coming back to is just the idea that when we know better, we do better. And I feel like at that June 7th meeting, we didn't have all of the information. And I think that I take responsibility for that in that we, as, and I've been saying this over and over again, but we as a district, we need to solicit feedback from everyone involved. We need to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to share how they are feeling about situations such as this. This is, this is a big deal for families and for staff. And I feel like we could have done better in giving the community the opportunity to share with us how they feel about this. Now, we obviously can't please everyone. There are a lot of components to this that as community members, even as school board members, I do not know about, you know, am not involved in. And so we have to put trust in our administrative team that they are going to give us all of the information that we need. But we also need to talk to parents and students. And I know that was one thing I mentioned at that June 7th meeting, had we talked to our high school students about how they felt about starting earlier or starting later? And, you know, we hadn't. It's the same with elementary parents. Do we need to talk to our families? Yes, absolutely. So to me, that was one thing, and I take full responsibility for it, but it's something that really came across in feedback from families that we really need to do better there. So now that we have more information, I guess I have a couple of thoughts that I'm thinking about. One, with the two-tiered system, I understand what Carson is saying, that it is likely not appropriate for us to go to a one-tiered system for this year, although I think that can still be part of the discussion. But I think in future years, we need to think of this as one of those systems issues that really needs to be looked at and changed for our community. For, you know, it's one of those things that maybe because it's been done before, doesn't mean it's good. And, you know, maybe it's worth spending more money on this because it's a systems issue that affects certain people in our community more than it does others. The other thing that I'm concerned about is making a decision based on high school athletes. This was something we talked about at the June 7th meeting, and, you know, several of us had brought up that there are studies out there that show that it's better for high school students to start school later. When we look at the information that was presented to us for this meeting about other districts in our conference, a lot of them are following that and have changed their schedules so that their students are starting later. And so I just wonder if we need to revisit that now that we have more information, knowing that, yes, it affects our student athletes, but it also really affects our elementary families and students there. And, you know, it, I don't want to put one against the other, but these are, seem to be the main issues that we're looking at. Can we make a decision for high school athletes? And I have a high school athlete, I understand, I don't want her to miss school. But is that more important at this point than the lives of our elementary students? Do we need to provide more consistency and continue what we were doing last year, you know, and keep a similar schedule to that so that then next year, we can really look into changing that system and need to provide a one-tier busing, but keep consistency for our families and students this year by going with version C. Obviously, I'm rambling here, lots of ideas, lots of things to consider.
Yeah, if I could respond real quick, first of all, I think Jim said it well on June 7th. This is a big decision and it's going to make some people happy and some people not happy, just like most important, you know, decisions. We can make, we can make either version B or C work for this coming year. You know, that's really when it comes to the routing, you know, if we had the elementary kids go first, for example, you know, we've already done a lot of the route, or the routing company's done a lot of the routing, but it's easily transferable, you just change the time of pickup. So we can make either B or C work. Kind of to your first point though, Jennifer, you know, as far as community engagement or getting feedback, we totally, or I totally agree. And in fact, that's why I'm really pleased that the school board approved the communications manager, you know, at the last board meeting, because it's something that I and we recognize is really important and we don't want to be below the curve, we want to be ahead of the curve in terms of communication to that public. So I think there will be some significant changes starting in September, hopefully when that person is, he gets work.
Holly, you're next in the queue, and then Nikki.
Thank you, Pam. I'm just weighing in really quickly with the statement that the start times that Carson is proposing for B and C still don't sit well with me. The hour and 20 minutes that the bus company needs in between the routes is a bus company issue, and it shouldn't become the reason we can't service our children the way they need to be serviced. So I don't know what the bus company can do on their end to make it their, to own that issue. I just don't, I don't feel like that should be the end statement. Well, the bus company can't do X. So when Arlen said originally, have we signed the contract? What does it look like to get out of the contract? You know, where are we headed with this? I think what Jennifer said is if we knew all of the information beforehand going into making the decision, we might have possibly, hopefully, would have thought about it differently. But I am with the parents one thousand percent when they say, I have to be to work at eight. My tiny person can't get on the bus by themselves. They cannot get off the bus at four-ten. Three-fifty is even late. They're still walking. It's somewhat dark. If the little people eat at eleven, they won't eat again till four or five o'clock. So you know, those, those are all things that I was, that I've been thinking about. I, I taught elementary for twenty years. Good gracious. So I just, I really like Arlen's questions and you know Jennifer's point, and I think the point was made. If we knew all of that information prior, and I do know Carson, at different times, you have given us bits and pieces of information, but I think what happened is it didn't come in one chunk at a time when we were all processing outside of COVID. So I, I just really think it's a bus issue and we have to be better.
Let's explain where the uh, the times uh in the morning, you know, between buses and the afternoon come from. Uh and uh really, it's a, it's a function of, of not the bus company. It's a function of how many kids they have to pick up and where they live. It's the length of the route uh and time to drop off at the, the, the school and then go back out and pick up more kids and go to the other school. Uh the reason it's an hour and twenty minutes uh for like version B is that they are leaving uh the high school and they have to navigate through the parking lot and the long line of cars that are going onto Flower Valley Road. So that's why we're, we're adding extra time there uh to accommodate for that. You know, if we had a separate road that didn't have to go through the parking lot that um lame then, then it might be a, a hour and ten minutes or an hour and fifteen minutes.
But what, I just want to go backwards to what you had said. Um well, then we would need more buses and more drivers. Okay, we need more buses and we need more drivers. That's why I'm saying it's a bus company issue. If we don't have enough bus drivers and buses, they need to go get some.
Yeah.
You know, if they can't figure out how to get kids home within an hour and twenty minute period because it doesn't work for the number of buses they have, they need to get more buses. That's where my head is at. That's where I'm feeling it's a bus company issue. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and obviously, I'm not a representative of the router, the bus company either. Uh but uh their argument would be, and I, I think it's just, uh is that we made a decision for a two-tiered system, you know, this past spring. When we made those budget reductions, we talked about, you know, that helping us make our budget plan. And uh again, in June, we um, you know, followed that up with approving the contract and also declaring that high school students would go first. You know, again, an indication that we have a two-tiered system. And so that's what they're programming for. Uh and you know, in late July, uh if there was a change back to a one-tiered system, I don't think that's fair to the, the router or the bus company because they've had all their plans, you know, throughout, you know, since last spring that it would be in a, in a particular way. And again, for, for them, it won't matter if, if elementary kids go first or secondary kids, you know, they will make that work. Uh and if we, let's say we had a whole bunch more kids who suddenly needed bus ridership, you know, especially as we go to a one, uh one mile a walking or no bus zone. You know, then they are responsible for it. They have to find the drivers and the buses to make it work. Uh but as far as a two-tiered system and you know, all that, uh I think we, uh we made that decision last spring and then again on, on June seventh.
Uh Nikki?
Um, phew, I have a lot to say about this, but just sticking close to topic. Um when we went, when we were talking about this, to my knowledge, it wasn't just about the sports. It was about the students that had jobs afterwards. Those students also, um they were complaining about the homework and having to do all those things and then do homework and getting up late. Um I don't know about a lot of you, but in, just in twenty twenty-one alone, I've had four. Cause I'm a respite care. I hold a foster license. So um I've had four teenagers under my roof. The mental health of especially our elders, just because we think that they're older, you know, that they can get their, which they can get themselves off, but like phew, that mental health piece with our older kids has rea, was really rocked this last year because they're the ones we're kind of forgetting about, that they can do things for themselves. So I think that kind of was in our shift of like, whoa, what can we do to, you know, really help accommodate these older ones and what's going on? Um. But I am of a, a, a high schooler and I've got elementary, and I just don't agree with the times in general and I never have. I came into this position saying, yeah, we can really, you know, get a change. Like I got a change for me in high school, you know, yeah, that's one person. This is a whole different district. When I heard Ramona Keto stately speak about trying to get change from our higher-ups, she's been in this industry in almost thirty years and just the baby steps in progress that she's made, you know, um wow. I almost felt hopeless at that moment, but um never, never give up, never give up. So I, I would have to um agree with Holly and Arlen about the busing system. And I don't, I think the communication thing that Carson talked about is a huge piece, cause that way, you know, if anybody does community engagement, it's exhausting. It's so exhausting. And then remember who you were talking to, who you got to tell and you know. So I think one central location would be great um to help with these things, but we do have to like um Jennifer and Anna said, maybe um the more community engagement, ye, yes, a lot of, and you know, every, these younger ones, they're a little bit more. Well, we're all equally busy, but you know, maybe they don't have time to tune in to a board meeting, you know, and things like that. I, you know, I realize that it's, we have the job too. But we also were in that spot with younger ones when our focus is, we're always in what the whole district's doing. We were just mainly in the concern of our own homes. So maybe with this communication piece, like being able to engage and outreach with, like we know we have some um families with younger students, like, hey, you know, these are the things that we're thinking about. How does this affect you? You know, like different communication. So that, like I said, the communications manager is a great spot. Um but I honestly want to, when structure is so critical to younger children. And we are in a time now that we got a lot of younger, a lot of kids that just traumatize easily, even if trauma doesn't happen to them. We have a lot of empathetic children that really do um empathize with their peers and things like that. So um keeping, keeping a stable structure for these kids is really important. So I would really like to see if we can't negotiate a contract or move anywhere, I would really like to see us all come together and really dissect and try, try our hardest to recreate a system and um that honors everybody. Because I've even seen these early times, that's horrible times, and then getting off that late. We shouldn't even have these kids. I can't even sit in these board meetings for more than two hours without trying to find an escape route in my head, like, you know, so I'm not even learning. And then we're all, we all leave exhausted. Um I think that's where we're gonna um get to be a, separate us from different districts as, as, as if we're creative to create our own schedule. But like the mass majority doesn't understand, we have higher-ups that it's really hard to um create something like that for us, but that's the only way our kids are gonna survive because we can't keep them inside. The, we all know what twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one did to our students. So I would like to use this as to up and grow, but if we have to do some wiggle room and just accommodate, I, I fully put my one hundred and ten percent commitment and going above and beyond to do something different and coming together with other people in order to do something different for our kids.
Arlen?
Thank you. Um like I said, I have a lot to say besides my questions. And I'm trying to look at this objectively. We're in a mess right now, in my opinion. I think we made the wrong decision. What is the best way to handle things for this year and future years? And from what I'm hearing is going to us, back to a single-tiered system at this time for this coming school year, it's too late to do that. And I can accept that if that's the case, but I think if that's what we really want us to go, we need to take a hard look at that for next year. Um, we had a lot of feedback. I think Pam and Jim and Holly and I were on the board when we discussed going from the block schedule to um seven-period day modified block schedule, all these different things uh a couple of years ago before COVID. And there were some students that came forward from the high school and said, we need to change the start times to a later time. It's and that's when I first became aware of high school students learn better by starting school later. And I studied that quite a bit. Um June seventh, I voted, or prior to the June seventh vote, we made a, had a poll or whatever it was to decide whether we should be going uh high school first or, or elementary first. I said I favored elementary, but I would be willing to try the high school first at that time. It was a mistake on my part. I'm sorry to the public and anybody else. Um in my opinion, that was a mistake. Um I want to go to policy five-ten. Um, which has to do with the student activities. Um. Second item, woman number two, a general statement of policy. School activities provide additional opportunities for students to pursue special interests that contribute to their physical, mental, and emotional well-being. This is the key sentence to me. They are of secondary importance in relationship to the format, formal instruction program. But then it goes on, however, they complement the instructional program in providing students with additional opportunities for growth and development. Each and every one of us will have to decide what importance that sentence is in there. I stand by it that I think science has said that, or I don't know, science or whatever, studies have shown that high school students learn better by starting later in the day, and elementary students learn better starting earlier in the day, and they shut down the afternoon. And so I certainly am standing very strongly with, I, I don't want to make the most, cause I want everybody to speak their mind and whether I you have agreement with me or not, but I support policy C for the situation we're in for now going forward for this next school year. I do have another thing I'd like to point out. I don't know if it's possible and how it would work, but uh back when some of us old-timers went to school, we had study halls and we have study hall available to our students now. A lot of our sports students and working students have seventh-hour study hall. I don't know how easy or that can be accomplished and still meet the academic needs of all the different diversified courses that we put out, but um in the future, if we stay into some of this, that's something to think about. A study hall might be a good option for students that are doing activities after school. And the same goes for our teachers. Some of them are teaching. They may, might tend to, if we're in a seven-period day, be more inclined to be teaching. Uh most of their classes between um uh first and sixth hour. So um at this point, I guess um I will be done here. I've stated my position. I will support option C. I will not support either option A or B. And I hope if we do, regardless of what we do, we take a good hard look where we're going next year with our transportation. And sometimes it's not about saving every single dollar. What have we got to lose in this district if we can't keep our people in our schools, people in our community happy with the way and time of our schools and different things? Um we're already concerned about declining enrollment and the possibility of losing students. We don't need to give people more, more reasons to leave our district. So, thank you.
Hannah?
Um, so I also prefer option C um of the three options. Um for, you know, basically the reasons you said, that, you know, the studies indicate that that's what's the best academically for the different age groups of kids. And I think that has to be our priority. Um certainly, all of the extracurricular activities are amazing and highly educational in and of themselves. Um but I think that um the, what's best for the kids' learning is the most important. Um and I do think that is reflected in C um with the information that I have. Um, a couple of things that um have kind of come to mind. Um Holly, talking about the, the bus company, it's a bus company issue. On one hand, I agree with you. Um and anything is possible with enough money. You can go to space. Um but we opted to make cuts and um I think one tier might be better. Um but I don't think it's worth revisiting at this time. Um with, you know, the fact that we have the contract signed and um where we're at financially. Um it could be the difference of, you know, two teachers for that cost savings. Um and I would rather put the money there, I guess, you know, when we're looking at um having to make difficult decisions. Um there are lots of things that I think we would do um if money weren't an object or weren't as big of an object or obstacle as it is. Um but another thing that I think maybe has been missing in terms of feedback is from the teachers. And um you know, one thing that I kind of was hearing from some of the teachers is that the email that we all got was kind of their first indication of what the times might be. Um and I don't know uh, you know, if they just missed it or if it wasn't communicated that well, but I think um those teachers who are with the kids, you know, can see when they, their kids have C lunch and they are starving and not paying any attention in class anymore, those teachers can tell you that like, yeah, this is not cool for us. Uh I would imagine they have the same type of feedback for, you know, starting times and ending times and things like that. And um I hope that our administrative teams are gathering information from the teachers as far as their feedback about things like this. Um but I don't really see evidence that that happened this time, and I think that's definitely an area for improvement because our teachers, our paras, our EAs are the ones who are, you know, day in, day out, direct contact with the students and should have the best information um to share with us about how those kids are doing. Sometimes even better than their parents actually know, um at least in terms of how tho, those schedules are affecting their academic um processing. So that's all I got.
Yeah, and by the way, I agree with you entirely. Our paraprofessionals, uh teachers, you know, have their lives too. And uh schedule change impacts them directly, uh and they have the best source for knowing what kids need. So uh building principals, uh you know, do talk to teachers and paraprofessionals on a regular basis. And that's one of the reasons why the longer instructional day at the elementary, you know, was suggested because of concerns expressed by, you know, some or many teachers that they needed more time. And uh but there's also feedback about how many recesses and length of the recesses and so many other things. Lunch, lunchroom time, that's a big deal. Anyway, I won't repeat everything, but uh we agree with you. Uh there wasn't a, a formal survey or anything like that, uh but there was a lot of anecdotal information that was shared with building administrators, cause I heard it myself during uh many of these discussions.
Holly?
Um, thank you. So as I look at C, and I've looked at C, we increased the amount of subs needed at the high school quite a bit if we go later in the day and coaches, and I'm not going to assume every coach is at the high school. But a lot of coaches, you know, and there's a couple at the elementary school. But a lot of coaches, you know, and there's a couple at the elementary school, we increase that sub pay and we really have to think about, is it sub pay we want to spend on? Is it looking at adding more buses that we want to spend on? You know, what, what is it that, and my first option would be going back to the bus company and saying, we need more buses. I understand what you're saying, Carson. You don't think it's fair. I get that. They're not paying you know, they're not, they're not paying for this education for the kids like the community is. So I'm always from the mindset of if we can try, let's try. If it's an absolute no-go, I don't know because I haven't talked to the bus company and I don't even know if you have. But my mind is always, you know, where is the money going to be spent? Because it's going to be spent somewhere. It's going to come out somehow. There's going to be loss. So that's my first hope. If that can't happen, just know that when kids are in the high school and they have that later day, they're going to get subs. They're gonna, you know, and that will increase a tremendous amount of the budget. So I don't know where we want to spend the money. But that's just my FYI.
Yeah. And you're right. You know, it's not just the cost for the subs, but more important, it's the quality of learning that takes place. And we always want the primary teacher with our kids as much as possible. And so there's kind of a non-financial cost as well. You're right, Holly. As far as the bus company and the routing company, maybe I shouldn't have used the word fair. I, I just don't think it's possible, you know, to go to a one-tiered system. You know, we could add a bus or two, but that won't enable us necessarily to do the whole one-tiered system over the next month of planning. So I, that's where I'm, you know, coming from. It's possible, not fair, or it's not possible.
Well, and Holly, I was just going to back up kind of what you were saying, you know, we have a specific pool of money. We don't have a money tree in the backyard that we can pull more off of to add more buses. I mean, we can't have it both ways, you know, we can't have more buses but have to cut, you know, $2.4 million. That money has to come from somewhere. And you're right, we have to prioritize where that is and where the parents and our community and our students feel like that's the best place for us to spend our money. I mean, there are 35 coaches. I think all but four of them come from the high school. And so we are spending a significant amount of money on coaches who have to leave and that instructional time. You know, and it's not just athletes. I need to, to make sure that we all understand that it's, it's all activities that happen after school. There's SOAR and NHL and jazz band and choir that happens either before or after school depending. So, you know, the high school day is much longer for people who are in activities. There's robotics and speech, plays. Kids that need to come in before school or after school to make up a lab because they missed, you know, the lab because they were at, I don't know, Minneapolis at a football game or whatever. So, you know, we have to think about that too, like the high school kids who are in activities and athletics. It's not just athletics, but it's a long day for those kids who, who may have a competition, a speech competition in Mankato and they, they're now coming home at 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night and they still have to do a bunch of homework that they weren't able to do on the bus because they needed to get on the computer to get their blessing. I mean, there's just so many, so many, you know, considerations for that. But, you know, I think we just, we just can't have it both ways. And I think we need to figure out what's the best for this school year. And I do remember Mr. Hartman coming and saying, you know, our goal is to get 100% of our kids at the high school in some sort of activity. And we're pretty, before COVID, we were pretty close to that. And we had a lot of kids in multiple activities. So and I won't, I won't argue with you, Arlen, on policy 510. Most kids that are in activities or athletics are much more likely to do better in school because they're in those activities and athletics. So you know, one feeds right into the other. So I'm not going to say obviously we're paying, you know, for our, our teachers to, to teach basics and we want them to get a good education. But kids aren't going to be plugged into a great education if they don't have an outlet for their passions and desires too. Plus Nikki, you talked about male health. That's that's key to the whole thing here. So I, I don't want to keep the labor in this point. I think we've all had a good amount to say. Let's let's see, there's a couple more in the queue, but I think at this point I'm still leaning towards version B because the other piece of this is I have to trust at some point that the administrators in, in, with that respective buildings. And yes, I know we didn't get a great amount of feedback from parents and students prior to the discipline. But I do have to trust that the administrators and the principals in the buildings do have a pulse on what they think is best for their learners and their buildings and their staff. If that is wrong, shame on me, but I, I you know, we, we hire people to work in an administrative capacity to make tough decisions. And at the end of this day, we're not going to please everybody. But I hope that in the end, we are all working what's best. Sometimes we can't come to 100% agreement and we've got to be okay with that. And we've tried different things and we've tried and we keep getting better, like Jennifer said. If we don't know, we can't get better. So that's all I'm going to say. Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great discussion. I'm going to throw something out there. You know, I'm the kind of guy that kind of watches the dollars, bring them up that we gotta do this and that, which I appreciate that you all know that. So, but we did pass a motion earlier last year that we're going to save $2.2 million. Remember that? We pay, save, we have, we ever had a finance committee meeting today and during that time we did it. We're looking at saving $2.2 million, $368,000. So it's above the 2.2. I applaud you for that. I'm, I'm going to advocate for a one-tiered system. Let's go back. We have people, we have to be worried about two down the road when a other competition comes along and takes our students. And if we don't do something now based upon what we're hearing and looking at staying, still staying within our, our goal of $2.2 million, since we talked about $150,000 saving by going to a two-tiered system and dropping them one mile for elementary. The cost savings also in that budget report that we got today from the finance was discontinued transportation routes as warranted. And that was a $60,000 savings. So I'm, I'm not sure where it's at 60 or it's $150,000. So, yeah, we got A, B, C. We all think A is bad. I don't think any of us would go for that. I'll advocate for a one-tiered system, get our kids on the bus together. Since we have more area neighborhood schools, they won't have as much dropping off in time there. And I get the idea getting out of the high school. I happen to live near or on Flower Valley Road and it's tough coming, doing it from when school gets out. But we have signal lights there at 21 and Flower Valley Road and Highway 58. So I'll, I'll listen for more, but that's what I, I say we go back to one-tiered system. Look at continued savings down the road during the next year. Thank you.
Jennifer.
Jim, thank you for saying that. I think a lot of us are feeling that. I'm just wondering if, you know, Carson says it doesn't seem possible at this point. So if we could continue that discussion to see if, you know, is it possible really? What can we do? How can we help? So that we can move forward with that. I agree completely that, you know, as I said before, this is a systems issue. This is about changing our system to meet the needs of the families within our community. And if we have a two-tiered system, there are a significant number of families that are left out. This does not meet their needs at all. And so the one-tiered system is obviously the best option in my mind. I did have a question or just kind of a clarification on Pam, what you said about the high school and activities. Yes, after school, there are a number of activities that kids would need to go to at a later time if if high school was later. But is it not mostly athletics for those kids that would end up missing school? There aren't a lot of events like speeches usually on Saturdays. So the students that would be missing school that seventh hour would be athletics mostly. Not, but that doesn't mean that the, the other kids in activities their day would be extended with the later time, certainly. And in terms of mental health, yes, we need to consider mental health for our high school students, which I, as Nikki said, was, you know, a big part of what we did early on. But what about the mental health of our families and elementary students? And as we've seen from our emails, this is a huge burden on a significant number of our families. And, you know, a significant number of our working class families, as I said, is a systems issue and two-tiered system doesn't benefit everyone. So if we could come up with some solution to be able to go to that tier one bus system, that would be ideal.
And I just want to reaffirm that I, I've been a proponent of a one-tiered bus system. I mean, that's why it was implemented several years ago. And for so many reasons, and I, I won't repeat them now, but I've always been an advocate. Because of the budget reduction process and driver availability, it became, at least last spring, it became important for us to, or that's why the recommendation was go to a two-tier to, to save on the need for bus drivers and also costs. I just don't think it's possible to do it for this coming year. It is definitely possible a year from now after we get the grade configurations established. I would love to see it come back, but it's July 26th. A lot of those emails indicated, you know, how frustrated people were because of the late timing of the notice. Imagine if we try to do a one-tiered system and it doesn't work. They would get notices in late August that all of a sudden they need childcare. And, and again, I, I just don't think it's possible. And that's my feeling. Now, as far as, you know, starting elementary kids first, that's possible. We can do that. But I think going back to a one-tier with just over a month is not, it's not feasible.
Would it be possible, this is Jennifer, to add a couple of buses to bring the times closer together instead of completely changing tiers, but perhaps finding two buses, two drivers in order to make the timing closer together for the elementary and the high school?
That is a good question. I don't know the answer to that offhand. I would have to check with our router to see how much of a difference that would make.
I think basically that's what I've been saying. They, they need more buses and more drivers to make it not so far apart. One tier, two tier. We just need more.
But again, last spring, we were very clear that we wanted to make some budget reductions. And one way to do it was to reduce how many buses we have. So it's, it's not the bus company's fault. You know, we're, we are the ones who made that decision. You know, I recommended it and the board has gone along with it. So, you know, it's not the company's fault or the router's fault. You know, they were following our lead. But again, as I've said, you know, either version B or version C will work. We can have the elementary kids go first. If, if that's what we want. And, you know, we'll, we'll be able to make that happen. I, I wish it was possible, really do, to snap my finger and suddenly we can do all that planning and hiring of bus drivers and everything else in about a month. I wish we could. I love the one-tiered system. I just don't think it's feasible for this coming year.
Nikki.
Okay, just from, if we, in the future, if we move from two-tier to one-tier, that means that they would all start at the same time, correct? Okay, just to get that under, just I, I want that for my own understanding.
Closer together, Nikki, not necessarily.
Closer together, just not at the same time, right?
Oh, for example, and I'm just throwing this out there, if there was a bus coming from Welch in a one-tiered system, they would probably bring in K through 12 kids, stop at Burnside and then have a 20-minute drive to the high school to drop off high school kids. That would be my guess. There's a shorter distance between the twin bus and the high school. And so you know, the times for the different elementary would likely be different.
Okay. And I just want to, I want to thank the respectful emails that we got. You are the ones I'm holding right in my heart and in my head right now as, you know, when we go to make very difficult decisions, you know. I just I think I just wanted to check on the one-tiered, two-tiered system, just to verify my mind. But sorry, my train went by. I will circle back.
I think we've all had a chance to weigh in and Anna, I'll give you the last word and then we can look for maybe a motion.
Well, I was going to make a motion for I will make a motion for the school's starting and ending times for 21, 22 as presented in option C.
I'll second it.
There.
Arlen.
Anna made the motion. Arlen seconded. Any further discussion? All right, I will take, oh, Jennifer.
Sorry, I just had one other thing. I was wondering if we went with C, if there would still be the option of talking to the bus company to see if adding a couple of buses would be an option and how much that would cost so that the high school would not have to start as late and end as late as is proposed in option C.
Yes, I will, I can contact the first dude down the routing company. First, the first dude to see if, if they could add two more drivers and then also the router to see what the impact would be. As far as cost, it would be 120 to 140,000, I would guess off the top of my head. There might be some additional costs for special education transportation as well. And so that's why I'd have to rely on their expertise.
And we're confident we'd be able to find that money? We'd have to rework the budget.
Well, like what Jim said earlier is that we're tracking pretty good right now. And so what I would probably do is just explore with Sarah and Terry to see, you know, if it's possible to do that and then, you know, what the impact would be. I do think that potentially it could shorten the times. But I think we need to get, like, let's say if version C was approved, we'd want to get that out, you know, as soon as possible. So at least parents know that you know, which group of kids goes first, the rough approximate time. And if we could shorten those times or shorten the bus rides, you know, that's also another reason to consider that. But I, you know, I'd want to make sure that there's a consensus of the board, you know, that feels that, you know, spending the money is appropriate.
Does that sound like an additional motion then?
You know,
Is it just something we could have information on Monday? Could we have more information by Monday about that? Because we'd meet again in a week.
I believe so, yeah. We could have a rough idea.
So we could revisit it.
Yeah.
So we can vote on this motion as presented?
And then I can check, you know, over the next few days. I may not, I won't, I probably won't have it on a Wednesday when I typically do the polling, but I would really push to get it on Thursday or Friday. You know, and I would probably ask them, can you add two more buses? And then what would it look like? How could it change? In my mind, that would be an adjustment, you know, not a major change. And so, you know, we could certainly approve version C or version B and then I could pursue that.
So we can just leave the motion as it is on the table right now? So the motion is to approve the starting and ending times for 21, 22 as presented in version C. Motion made by Anna, seconded by Arlen. We don't need any friendly amendments there? No, all right. So we will take a roll call vote this time, starting with Mr. Bryant.
No, because I want a one-tiered system.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
And chair votes no. So that passes five to two.
So if I could just spend a quick minute, this is what I'm proposing to do. Again, a communications message is to develop that message that will be sent hopefully tomorrow. I always like to try to get the English version and a Spanish version out at the same time. So the message might go out on Facebook first because Jamie runs a Spanish-speaking Facebook. And so, you know, typically they kind of go out at the same time. And then at some point later, there'll be an email to parents. I'm really planning to do it tomorrow, but, you know, we'll, we'll see how the day unfolds. It's important to get the message out as soon as possible to parents. So that's a top priority. And this time I'll include a little more verbiage explaining why the, the decision was made at the elementary kids' school. So I'll do a better job this time.
And will you include the idea that you're going to look into additional busing?
Yeah, I'll at least phrase it so that it's clear that we're continuing to explore options. If, if we can, you know, make the, the times a little bit different. I don't want to overpromise. That's my only thing.
Right, but I think it's important that parents know that we're continuing to pursue this.
Right.
Can we say that it's tentative?
Yeah, preliminary, subject to change, you know, we'll come up with some, some verbiage for that.
I think it would be important that we do have a final or as close to final as possible by next Monday. But just with the idea that we may change.
Sure.
But I think you need to be careful about not making it so that it sounds like it's going to be a drastic change because then parents are going to be very upset or guardians about, oh, well, I can't do anything anyway because it's going to change again. So I think if anything, you need to be clear about how, you know, if any changes were going to happen, it would be the starting times would get closer together.
And like, we have high school would start earlier.
Yes.
Right, that would be the
That would be the likely
And my guess is we're talking like five minutes.
Right.
So this is not a massive overhaul. So I don't want to give anyone the impression that, you know, it's going to be a 30-minute change. You know, because we have, you know, a dozen, or we have a couple dozen buses out there. So I think two buses won't significantly impact, but I think we need to at least check it out and see what the impact is.
Arlen.
Yeah, I'm just going to offer wording here a little bit, but I think you kind of covered it. I think basically say this is what we approve, subject to minor starting time revisions, if we can bring the starting times closer together between the schools or some of that effect. You guys covered it, so thank you.
And that's perfect, Arlen.
Yeah.
And clearly, this is an issue that, you know, affects people very, very deeply. It affects your whole life, what time your kids start school. So this is something that I think would be a great thing for us to continue to gather information about whatever we end up with for this year, to continue to gather information. Yes, hopefully do better.
But I'll tell you, I'm not in favor of spending $120,000 to change it for five or 10 minutes. I mean, that's, that's not a wise use of money or a change in time. So, I mean, it has to be significant to make it worth that money. I mean, I, five or 10 minutes isn't going to make it for me. So we'll have to readdress that on Monday if that's the change.
All right, any other last-minute additions? And I'm looking for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jim, do have a second? We'll start with Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye, and good night.
Chair votes aye, we adjourned at 8:43.
Good night.
Good night.
See y'all later.